We're still waiting on our chair to come in from another meeting as well as a couple of other commissioners.
Any chance that Michelle might have grabbed the other meeting invite again? There's no way she could be sitting on there, right? I assume that's closed.
Correct. I've tried calling her. She's not there. Or excuse me, she's not answering. And our vice chair is not here this evening. What is the commission's pleasure? Would you like to get started or do you want to wait a little longer?
I think we give it one more minute and then we go ahead and get started. Seven oh five. That would be my.
Okay. So Kate Townley, since you have been a prior chair, if our chair does not make it on, are you happy and willing to lead the meeting?
Sure.
Thank you. I'll keep watching for Michelle.
Hi, everybody.
I see you didn't rub it in that you've been bringing food this time.
Believe it or not, we did just finish some sea bass, some steak, some salad in your room. How many of you people had cheesecake? So there's going to be a waiting tomorrow at the office.
Okay, Kate Townley, Chair Austin is not here still. Would you like to get started? We do have a forum.
Sure. And I was just looking up because I wanted to make sure I, I know you had sent out an email saying we had an updated agenda. So I was just opening that to make sure I'm on the same page. But we could go ahead and call to order the Wednesday, January 19th meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission. And can we take the role?
And Kate Townley?
Yes.
McDonaldson?
Here.
Colin Hagerty? Judy Brown is absent. Kate Fuller?
Here.
Noel Atkins?
Present.
Carl Adams?
Here.
Brenda Hubka?
Here.
And Chair Austin is currently absent.
First thing on, we have on the agenda is the approval of the minutes for the January 5th meeting. Do we have a motion to approve those minutes?
My only concern on that is I don't see them in the packets and I very well just may have missed them. Did anybody else see that or am I just?
I have some here in the updated agenda in the meetings portal.
Okay, it is in the updated one. I am. Thank you.
Colin, were you just looking at those to see if you would motion? Or does anyone else have a motion?
I'm sure I can vote on them by the time I see them. I felt like I should at least be able to see them to motion them. So it's loading right now. And now I see them. I moved to approve the minutes from the January 5th, 2022 meeting.
I will second the motion.
Any discussion or changes on the minutes? Not hearing any. So if we can take a vote?
Townley?
Yes.
McDonaldson?
Abstain.
Colin Hagerty? Colin?
About that, yes.
Thank you. Kate Fuller?
Yes.
Noel Atkins?
Yes.
Carl Adams?
Oh, yes.
Brenda Hubka?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is the public forum, which is an opportunity for the public to address the Planning and Zoning Commission for items that are not on this agenda. So not for the, the public hearing. Nancy, do we have anyone signed up for the public forum?
I will need to check. If you are here to speak, not for the public hearing, please raise your hand. I'm seeing a, a Freedom Mil- Milklin, Jan Brown, and Mr. Holberg, or any of you interested in addressing the commission on anything other than the public hearing? I don't see any, anyone. So I think we're good.
And it looks like Michelle may have just joined the meeting. Do you want me to pass it over to her?
Sure.
Well, it sounds like my technical challenges, I finally got it solved, but it sounds like Kate, you, you did a great job. I don't know where we are on the agenda. So.
We're just at the place of the public hearing to open that. So at item four.
Okay, well, great. Then I will, yeah. Okay. So Nancy, do we have any members of the public that are here to, to speak?
We need a motion to open the public hearing.
Very much.
That's okay.
Do I hear a motion to open the public hearing?
I will move to open public hearing case number zone two zero two one dash oh four.
I'll second.
Sorry, who was the second? Hold on. Who was the second?
Kate Townley.
Thank you.
So I'm confused. Are we on the, the, the public forum or are we on the public hearing?
Public hearing.
Okay, great. All right. I think I heard four and that would be public forum. On different documents, it's not the agenda. So.
You're ready, you're ready for staff presentation and then applicant presentation and then we'll do public testimony.
Do we need to vote on the motion?
Well, yes, of course.
Of course, okay. All right. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. Nancy, could you call the role on the motion?
Sure. Kate Townley?
Yes.
McDonaldson?
Yes.
Colin Hagerty?
Yes.
Kate Fuller?
Yes.
Noel Atkins?
Yes.
Carl Adams?
Yes.
Brenda Hubka?
Yes.
And Chair Austin?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, terrific. All right. Now are we ready for the presentation portion?
We are.
Okay.
Chair Charles? Please raise your right hand. Let me come off the video here. Please raise your right hand. Let me get my oath up. Do you swear affirm under the penalties of perjury that you will tell the truth in this proceeding before the planning and zoning?
I do.
Thank you.
Yep. Good evening, commissioners. So I'll be giving the staff presentation. But as in previous ones, this is a group effort. So there are members of our engineering utilities departments as well on the line. So if when we get to the end, if you have any questions for any of us, feel free and the, the party will help you out with those. So I'm going to share my screen. Let me do that real quick. Alrighty, can everyone see a green presentation screen?
Yes.
Yes.
Perfect. Thank you. So as mentioned, this is ZO in 2021 dash zero zero four for a PUD for 3601 South Huron and eight 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 West Ithaca. So the site is just south of Ithaca Avenue between Inca Street and South Huron. It is zoned I1 light industrial currently. It's about three quarters of an acre just to air over that with the current use being an office building. As far as the proposed project, it is for 24 residential townhome style units. These would be split between four different structures, each with six units and about, and three stories in height or yeah, three stories with a high limitation of 50 feet. This project beyond what would be required in industrial district, which is the underlying zoning will boast increased landscaping as well as a fully parked site above what would be required in the UDC or the Unified Development Code. So Peter's group, I'm sure will have the, the more colorful pictures, but here is a site plan of the project. So you can see two drive aisles that enter off of West Ithaca Avenue, which is the top of the picture. And it's also the north on this picture. So there are two drive aisles that enter from there into each unit having its own individual two car garage. As well as just an elevation of the picture of the property from a view from Inca Street. So as far as code modifications go, so these would be things that, you know, if this was a, a use by right development, these would be the things that they're, they're doing differently than what would be required under the code. So the first one would be that they're doing more landscaping than would be required in the industrial district. So their curb proposal has 10%, whereas the UDC would only require eight. They are capping the property at a 50 foot max height, whereas in the I-1 line industrial district, there would not be any max height requirement. Additionally, they are proposing a higher maximum parking ratio. So they would have 48 off-street parking spaces, again, two, two-car garage per, per unit. Whereas the UDC would only require them to have 41 on the property. The next is the setbacks. The I-1 district does not have any minimum setbacks. They would require themselves to have a minimum of three from each property line. And then lastly, and the one that is the most important for a planning and development is the use change, which would allow only residential on this property as opposed to those I-1 light industrial uses that would be permitted today. As far as project enhancements, the applicant, as mentioned in the, the previous public hearing for the 36 and that 3690 South Jason PUD, they have a multimodal master plan for this project as well as the other ones they have going on in the area for improvements for, you know, bike lanes, ADA ramps, cross, crosswalks, things of that nature. The next thing is they are also improving the walkability of the area through detached sidewalks. Currently, this area has all attached sidewalks. So connected to the curb. They would propose detached sidewalks, which would provide a little more room and safety for those using them. Additionally, this would provide more homeownership, many go in, and these would be for sale. And then, as mentioned on previous slides, they increase an additional parking and landscaping above what would be required for, for the underlying zone district. So as far as staff findings, staff found that this project was consistent with the conference of plan. There was in conformance with adopted and generally accepted development standards. Those substantially consistent with the goals, objectives and policies of the city and that it was furthering the goals, objectives and policies of downtime development plan. Additionally, as listed in the staff report, there are five conditions that staff is recommending along with approval of the planning and development. So the first is the open space fee and lieu payment. Second would be the construction of those crosswalks and curb ramps. The third would be a commemorative plaque for the Carnation House that was previously on the site. Third would be consideration of all multimodal master plan improvements that the, the applicant has proposed that would be reviewed later by our public works department and any that they require would be constructed. And then finally, the last would be a minor subdivision prior to first CEO for any sort of property combinations or easements that are required by the city. And that is it for my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions. And like I said, I have multiple members of the staff as well. If you have any questions for us.
Actually, if you don't mind, before we move into questions, if I could have all of staff come on and I'll just swear you in at once. And then when the applicants come up to do theirs, I'll do them all at once. So if I could get Wade and Tim and everybody, that would be great. And if you could raise your hand, staff? Do you swear affirm under the penalties of perjury that you will tell the truth in this proceeding before the Planning and Zoning Commission?
I do.
Okay, when it, when you are called on to answer a question or to speak, just please state your name and your position with the city. Okay, Colin has a question.
Thank you, Will, for that information. I do have a couple of questions on your staff report. One of them is you note that the maximum lot coverage 55%. Is that only considered the buildings and none of the other infrastructure as well? I guess it seems like it's, you know, 100% in coverage.
That, that's correct. As far as the way it's written for this PUD would just be those, the structures.
And we had the same conversation, I think, with the last site. I know we're industrial here, but really if this is transitioning more towards a higher density residential area, I feel like we need to be looking at like landscaping requirements for higher density residential, like an MU, you know, MEB1 or maybe an R3 or something like that, MEB3. Do you know how the landscaping relates to any of those other re, other types? And I also want to confirm, I think you said 10%, but the document says 21% landscaping in the staff report. So I wanted to also confirm which number we're going to be looking at. Because 21 feels like would be great, but I don't think we've got that much.
I, I, I'll either circle back or defer the, the percentage question. It, just so I can look it up once, once I'm not on the spot. But as far as other, other zone districts, you know, if this was like in the, the R2B or any of those, you know, mostly residential, very limited office ones, it, it could be anywhere in about the like the 20, 20, 25% range. And then for the medical districts, which are probably a little closer to this, I believe those are, I think 15% is the landscaping. It's somewhere around there. And yeah, I mean, you know, in, in my opinion, the, the neighboring properties to this are still going to be that I-1 light industrial. So that, that's kind of the reason why, you know, I would draw comparisons to the, the neighboring properties is because when you, when you see those neighboring properties, this one will have more landscaping than the ones next door to it. And so that was kind of the intent. I'll, I'll look up in just a second that I'll pull up the plan and, and see what the, the percentage was for the landscaping.
Kate Townley?
It could be helpful too, when you're pulling up the percent of the landscaping and looking at some of it now, but to also revisit what the purposes of the landscaping that, you know, there is ecological purposes and it's more than just beautification for a lot of the sites. So I think that's something we definitely want to keep in mind. I understand it's a constrained site, but that's very minimal amount of landscaping and it's one of those things. And I talked about this, I think at our last PUD is that when it's favorable to compare this to residential, we compare it to residential. When it's favorable to compare it to industrial, we compare it to industrial. And if the fact is we're switching it to residential in this particular area, we really should be looking at residential standards like Colin mentioned. And also, you know, I, I think one of the things you just mentioned as well is that the site can have the industrial uses right next door that don't have a height limit. We could have a 500-foot tall building, not that we will, next door to it, which, you know, negates most of the landscaping that would be proposed in there. So. But yeah, if you can also just remind us on some of the purposes of the, the landscaping, I think that can be, be helpful in making that decision on whether or not it makes sense to reduce it down to eight or 10% or what it.
Yeah. So I, I did, I did just look it up. So the property itself is 33,280 square feet. The proposed landscape area is 4,515 square feet, which equals out to 13 and a half percent. So the minimum as for the plan or the, the development plan, so remember kind of PD is kind of splendid. Technically split into two different pieces, the development and the site plans, which are kind of combined now into that one document. So development plan is the part where it says these are the minimum, you know, requirements, which is where that 10% that I had referenced in the presentation. 13.5 is what is actually shown on the site plan. So that would be what the, what they would have on the, on the end result. You know, as far as, as far as the landscaping goes, I, I really think this project has some really high quality landscaping to it. Through things like street trees, through things, through a lot of the, a lot of the landscaping is on the areas where people are going to interact with the site. So a lot of that landscaping is out the front doors of these properties. They're, they're, yeah, in between the street. So I, I really think, you know, as far as, as far as landscaping goes, I, I really do think it, it, you know, meets those goals of what, of what you want out of landscaping. But certainly that's just my opinion, you know, and, and everyone's entitled to their own.
Kate, did you have another question?
I, I do. I guess one other question I would have for staff is that similar to feet in lieu, is there an opportunity if we're reducing the amount of, potentially were to allow for a reduction in landscaping on this site? Can we request additional landscaping in, in sites near, nearby additional street trees? Or some other things that can happen that, you know, are within close proximity or have enough of a nexus to the, the site that, that we're looking at? Is there any precedent for that?
I, I am not, I'm not certain on, on that one. Yeah, Wade, do you have any insight on that?
Yeah, I think it, I think it would have to have a nexus to being immediately adjacent or something like that. You know, we can't ask for fees and then, you know, it, it placed blocks away or something like that. So I, I believe to, to keep us clear, there would need to be a, a real tie into this site. So we don't get in trouble in terms of impact fees or something like that, which we don't have policy on in the city at this point. So I, I would, I guess I would maybe steer away from, from that. But it's, you know, certainly if you wanted to make that a recommendation, we would have further discussions between now and city council and, and certainly report that to city council that that's what you would all like to see. And, and work with the developer and come up with some sort of plan in the meantime.
Colin?
I, I have a couple of questions for the developer. I also have one more question for city side. Is the city seeing the issue with? the pumping system for their stormwater site? Man, I know they have an emergency overflow, but was that at all a question or challenge or anything that you needed to assess?
I'll take that one. No, we don't really have any issues with their pumping system at this point. Obviously, the they're a little bit further ahead than what we usually see at this point in the development. Given the fact that they have their entire storm system laid out, they are showing where their detention is. And then they'll be reducing the rate of runoff actually fairly significantly below what's existing there. Because it is just an asphalt, mainly an asphalt lot. So they're going to be reducing the rate of runoff pretty significantly, and we don't have any issues with their pumping system. The city has allowed a very similar similar layouts for other developments throughout.
Tyler, for the record and as a formality, could you please state your name and your position with the city?
Yep, sorry about that. Tyler Trojan, Public Works Engineer Two.
Michelle.
I have a quick question for staff to sort of tag along on Kate's idea. Is perhaps looking at the landscape standards in the industrial district, something that we might be should look at in our unified development code committee?
Yes, absolutely. I think that's a perfect thing to to consider as part of the rewrite.
Okay, Wade, can you make a memo on that so that so you're not relying on my memory to to make sure that's brought up?
Yes, I certainly will. And you know, you you can go further than that and you can require larger buffers based on, you know, if you have a residential project next to an industrial building, you can have increased buffer and landscaping requirements. So there's a whole bunch of things you can do with that.
Well, I I personally like having this landscaping on the outside because essentially the the community sees the nice landscaping. Where if all the buildings were on the outside, they wouldn't. They just see the sides of the houses and things like that. So anyway, I won't say anymore because you still are not done with your presentation. Thanks.
If I could answer real quick, so I just wanted to, yeah, if I just want to make a point of clarification. So I, let me, let me pull up this plan real quick and show you guys again. So the if it loads, we'll wait for that. But so the the twenty one percent that I I my my speed reading, it needs some, it needs some work this this evening. So the the reason why those those numbers, there's three different ones. So like I said, the ten percent is the is the quote unquote minimum of the property. The thirteen and a half that I referenced is the actual kind of kind of green space. If you were to take a bird's eye view of it, look down that the green spaces thirteen and a half percent of the property. But our code also allows for alternatives to meet landscaping requirements. So those would be things where you're, you know, providing more vertical elements in your landscaping through trees, shrubs, that kind of thing above what's required. So that's where that twenty one and a half percent comes from is from taking those same allowances that are allowed in the code and kind of applying it to this PUD, which is where it gets up to that twenty one and a half percent through the large number of street trees that they provided through between the between the the curb and sidewalk.
Okay, Carl.
As far as the landscaping goes, I'm kind of curious as to who's going to maintain that. And also the snow removal in the winter, who's going to do the snow removal? Will it be a HOA with this development?
Um, I I'll defer that question to when when the applicant comes on. You know, all landscaping is required to be maintained by the by the property owner adjacent for that part of the question. But as far as snow removal and their strategies for that, I'll I'll defer to them.
Yeah, I just wanted to remind the commissioners that we're still on staff presentation and have not allowed the applicant. And I understand the applicant does have a presentation, so maybe some of these specific, more specific things about certain questions can wait until that time. Will that work for you, Carl?
Sure.
Thanks. And I don't know if the staff has more to present or if we're on to applicant presentation. Just let me know.
Nope, I have nothing left to present unless you have further questions for me.
I I got another another part here. The the storm. The vault system. What the, what kind of rain would overload that? Would it be a ten year, twenty five year or whatever? You're going from most of that lot was was dirt before, well, half of it about. So you're going to a completely paving and rooftops. So there's going to be quite a bit of runoff there. So then the storm, the vault, I don't know what size it is and how much capacity it has, but probably a ten year rain would overload it easily. Maybe, I don't know. Do we know?
The applicant can jump in later, but I did read in the report that it is a hundred year system in there.
Will, can you answer that question or?
Um, I think Tyler was answering. He might have been on mute. If you want to jump on Tyler's.
I'm sorry. I didn't realize I was on mute. But yes, it is a hundred year. It is sized for a hundred year storm event.
Thank you.
Okay, um, so I assume that I'm supposed to call on somebody from the applicant team to start their presentation?
Actually, if all of the applicant team will come on screen, I will swear everyone in. And again, if you are speaking, if you state your name and your business address and your affiliation with the applicant, that would be most helpful. So here we go. Do you swear or affirm under the penalties of perjury that you will tell the truth in this proceeding before the planning and zoning commission?
Yes.
Thank you so much.
Okay, terrific. Go ahead and start your presentation. Thank you.
And Peter, would you like me to share my screen or would you guys like to do it from your side?
I got it. Thanks, Will.
Yep.
Beginning. Okay, folks, you know, this is just another visitation to planning commission. And I want to say thank you for the opportunity. I think you'll see it's a continued business plan and overall commitment to community development of different product types of different intimate sites within Englewood. I'm joined here tonight, Alma Palmer is the administrator who's been with us at previous meetings, Daniella Chacon, Joe Ryan from Design Studios. We're joined virtually, I believe, by John Stafford, potentially Kevin Kennedy. I know I saw Mr. Kibby, the traffic engineer that we put together. We have Diane and Stacy from Super Blue, the landscape architects for all three sites. And Dylan is remote, so that those are some repetitive people that are around the table and we will all wave and say hello. The company overview, you folks have seen that before, so I'm not going to be redundant. But with success, we look forward to the three additional opportunities that are distinctively different in these PUDs that we're presenting. We have already presented to you in the past who we are and what we do. But this is pretty important. The goals or objectives for this site are different than the goals and objectives for each of the other three that we're working closely with the city with. We continue to want to try and deliver attainable for sale housing to all ages and demographics. I think that in the first presentation, you saw a very, very entry level product, size wise, price wise. This particular product type is a townhome. It lives differently. The size is substantially bigger and it provides a an alternative to the other two products that we're building. So this is a larger, more expensive type of product. The increase in municipal fee will summarize that because there's a big change in additional tax revenues. We totally want to integrate and connect the neighborhoods by activating the the dead parking lots in the really darkness in the area. We want to encourage walkability redevelopment. We have demonstrated a commitment for pocket parts and open space. This particular opportunity, we will talk in detail about the landscape packages, which are different than the other two, because the product lives differently, has a different demographic. We've talked about identification of the industrial district, and we're also talking about product diversification. You folks have been very patient with us. These are summaries of our previous projects and successes. These are the most current Downing and Corona Street accomplishments that we've had. And we also celebrated support and success through your efforts on the Elks. And I am proud to say that we had a seven zero positive vote from city council last night on the Elks. And we're very proud to continue to deliver our very, very unique opportunities in Englewood. You, all of you know about the zone districts that we're talking about, so this is nothing new in our presentation. The the site, as Will mentioned, is clearly outlined here. A couple of actual photographs, you know, photographs tell a million stories. This is looking south on Inca from the corner of Ithaca in Inca. Mr. Holberg's building is the adjacency property on the left hand side. This is another view looking from West Ithaca mid block looking east. You you know, the office building, which is to our left by the telephone pole. You got the veterinarian to our also to our north, north area. The other photograph is another view mid block looking west. Again, we have provided some actual photographs and I'm sure all of you have driven the areas. I I think that that was one of the really nice compliments yesterday from city council that people have actually driven the neighborhoods and really understood the pieces that we were presenting. So this is another here on site looking south. If the drywall truck wasn't there for what reason, I have no clue, but Mr. Holberg's property would be to the right of that truck. The view on the right hand side is the legendary South Restaurant would be one of our community amenities directly across the street to the north. Once again, we use the term the catalytic. Everyone is quite familiar with that. It kind of helps that we're sort of so close together in our presentations. But I I hope through our presentations, we all grasp that we are not doing cookie cutter reproductions. Each individual community or addition to the neighborhood has its own dimensions. This one is an age bracket that is different than the Alcoa Galapagos. This is targeted for people between thirty five and forty five, typically a move up. Some of these people are moving out of apartments, they're moving out of condominiums, and they're looking for a larger floor plate. There's a limited supply of townhomes. You see a lot of duplexes being created. They live differently and they provide a certain housing selection for all of Englewood. The elevations, it's a three story building. It's very urban. There's only six units per building, so there's two very attractive end homes, a total of twenty four. As noted by Will, our pictures are colored and show some life as opposed to black and white. So I'm proud of trying to get a little more passionate in terms of color presentation. Total onsite parking is forty eight spaces private. And the particular product type in all of the homes will feature a two bedroom, two and a half bath flex office den, third bedroom. In all likelihood, it will be from experience and from demographics. It will be used primarily as a den slash office. As I know Carl has asked some questions about stormwater, we do have the onsite program. And we will be more than happy to answer technical questions with our engineer HKS. This is a representation again of the entire site, which denotes both the landscaping, but also we wanted to reflect because there were some questions about what type of onsite parking is there to complement the neighborhood? What the onsite parking is, so we wanted to just provide a bright visual for that. We separated each view. This is the east side, which clearly denotes the street width, which if I'm not mistaken, is forty four feet. Mr. Holberg's property would be to the south of the building footprint that you're seeing right now. That's his parking lot. We have the detached sidewalk complement that was accentuated. We have this tree lawn along all three sides of the property along with furniture in front of the entryways. We'll get into some of the landscape compliments and some of the significant dimensions that we put together after we go through this. This is the west view again depicting the streetscape sidewalk and delivery into the homes. The north side is another depiction of the same configuration. And the south side is the other representation. One of the things that is on the PUD is that there is a total of, which is important with these representations of these trees in the green, we have a total of forty eight trees that are planned for this project, eighteen of which are between the curb and the sidewalk of two and a half inch calibers. So I think that if you want to see the quality of landscaping, take a peek at Corona and Downing. The blue people provided us a tremendous commitment to landscaping along the street. Next. You know, traffic is always a topic of discussion. The existing site generates approximately sixty five daily trips a day. Ironically, the traffic study formally done shows that the proposed development deliver about seventy trips to this site. This is a parking comparison. I think everyone has worked on the right hand side to say, what is the what is the city doing with within certain distances of the city center? The range of parking requirements, you know, just cutting right to the chase. The townhome situation provides its most gracious amount of two private spaces per home. Again, another elevation. Again, another elevation. Yeah, what are some of the benefits? Number one is we're, we're providing housing choices. We look at supply and demand by pricing point, supply and demand by people. And we're just trying to deliver a choice of variety in Englewood. Property taxes in this particular site will go from approximately twenty nine thousand to seventy five to a hundred, depending on the mill levy. Once again, we've committed to contributions to any type of attainable housing program. It's of record that there's probably in excess of four hundred and fifty thousand dollars that'd be paid to the city of Englewood in permits and fees. We're of record of continuing our contribution to the Hampton pedestrian. We love to participate in our enhancement of the industrial district. And we believe that different types of rooftops will bring diversification and opportunity to all of us in local businesses. One of the things that I, I did very quickly was I, I did a quick comparison between the first one that we delivered to planning and zoning and most recently to city council. The first one, as you can see, we delivered a plan for sixty six residences. In this particular property, we're doing twenty four residences, completely different type of living. The one on the left with condos is strictly a horizontal one level. The townhome is vertical on three levels. The parking ratio on the Elks neighborhood addition is one point four five. The parking ratio here on two. Interesting for all of you to take a look at the size being that we're offering. In the Elks, we were in the vicinity of five hundred and seventy square feet to eight twenty eight with an average of seven seventy. And the size band here is sixteen hundred and fifty square feet to one thousand seven hundred and sixty square feet for an average of seventeen oh five. The price bands are obvious, they're substantially different. We also believe that when we look at the ratio of the number of units in this price band, one will note that we are trying to serve all levels of product choice. But we're not trying to oversaturate the super high end. The product property tax increment, we said it's currently around zero for Elks. Going up to about one twenty on the Elks deal with our representation that currently we're around twenty nine thousand with the improvements on the existing I one going to a forecast of seventy eight. And that's our presentation. We look forward to answering as many questions with the right people.
Okay. At this point in time, according to my notes, we moved to public testimony. Am I correct Nancy?
No, you can, commissioners can ask the applicant team questions.
Okay, perfect. Great. All right. If you have some questions, raise your hand. I'm going to rely on you Nancy to take care of.
Colin.
Thank you and thank you for the presentation. Obviously, there's some great stuff that's happening in this area and it is exciting to see more functional uses than maybe what's going on there. Right now we do have a few questions. One of the items that you noted was pocket parks and things to that nature. I'm not seeing anything here. Where are dogs going? I mean, I've been told you come to Colorado and you get a dog in a Subaru. So, you know, where are those, where are those going to be going here?
Yeah, I think the dog in Subaru along with the residents who are on a leash, the residents are on a leash, go into their townhome. So from a parking standpoint, the parking is self defining. The dog situation, this is urbanology. The area will have, the twenty four townhomes will have, what is the formal term, the doggy containers? Picked up things. Pet waste stations. In terms of your observation of the pocket park, the townhomes live differently, but we're also approximately five hundred feet or four blocks from Miller Park. And again, from a diversification standpoint, we have incorporated pocket parks in two out of the three proposed because they live differently. And in the townhome product, we recognized our location. We did a demographic assessment and that's how we made those decisions, Colin.
Can you expand maybe on the dog waste station and what that is and what we can expect to see as part of that?
I think it's, you know, I don't have a picture of it, but it's a vertical standing station that has the capacity to take both plastic bag tied and put it in. The HOA would have the responsibility to service. You know, there's actually businesses now that that's all they do is pick up waste. So this particular HOA, just as the one on Downing and Corona, they contract with a waste carrier. So there would be a dog station on the west, north and on the east. So if I was a homeowner, I could take a little Vito out for a walk, pick up Vito's hello and, you know, we pop it in the, the waste container and the HOA would be responsible for picking up that waste. I'm going to probably dovetail onto Carl to say that the snow removal would be taken care of by the homeowners association. Landscaping would be taken care of by the homeowners association. And the common area would be fully low maintenance. So those homeowners are in a full service environment.
Carl.
Thank you for mentioning that. That's helpful. The snow removal, you have a, one page in there that shows the shadow that the building will cover. And the shadow will go over into the south restaurant parking lot. So that basically the whole street north of the building will be, it'll get no sunshine at all, hardly. So the snow removal is going to be a factor there because I, I know that you're big on bicycles and bicycles and ice don't mix. No. Go ahead.
I interrupted you. I apologize.
That's okay. Go ahead, go ahead.
Okay, so what is the, any property in our neighborhoods on the north side of any of our streets adjacent to provide that screening? This is a normal three story structure. It does not extend the shade line. I do not have the technical measurement of how far that shadow is. Currently, there are a number of buildings that are greater than three story. And what it basically says, just like we did on Downing and Corona, is that the maintenance on the north side has two effects. One during the snow, you need to put more attention or the same quality of attention. And also during the summer, it's going to be a different planting group that we're going to put on this on the north, which will respond better to shade than the ones on the south and on the east and the west. So it's a combination of summer and winter concentrations when we do that. But I, I totally agree because we have the north side and I'm able to payment projects with no pressure.
Just you, you mentioned it, just to throw this out there. December twenty first, the, the sun angle is about twenty six degrees, which makes it pretty much double the height of the building on the shadow of the shed. You got a hundred foot building, you got a two hundred foot shadow. That, and that's the worst of the year, December twenty first.
All right. What the technical information? That's pretty amazing of how those coordinates work and I bet you it changes every year.
Okay.
Same every year.
Sorry, Kate.
I just have a few questions, but I was just going to ask one for now. Could you confirm the height of the building? And if you know, do you know if it's taller than the existing new police building?
I don't know what the police station is.
It turned out a little too tall, in my opinion. And so this part of the neighborhood is kind of like the rents are not high over here. The people are not fancy. Like, I'm worried that this is going to be like upsetting for the neighborhood, honestly. Because I think your other project was better priced for this area than this new one is. Like looking on Zillow and Redfin, like six fifty for this direct neighborhood is way higher than what this neighborhood is going for. And then on top of that, like it's starting to get taller and like we're changing the zoning to make it taller. And I'm wondering if that's going to ruin the neighborhood. So that's the only concern I have, kind of like how tall is the building? Because on Carl's note, it's going to create ice around the neighborhood that maybe your project's not responsible for, but it's going to create a burden on the other people. But that was like my main question was just how tall is it going to be?
Kate, I appreciate the question and the observations. So I'm going to get the technical answer from Joe, who's the architect, the height of the building, twenty three foot six? Forty three feet point six.
Yep.
And that is equivalent to some of the three story duplexes and townhomes that are being built in this neighborhood along with other portions of, of Englewood. In all due respect, the conditions on the north side of our sidewalk will be maintained by our HOA. And the street conditions are no different than any other east, west dimension for the city. So are we adding detriment to the neighborhood? My position would be no. Related to your observation about price spending, that's an interesting one because what we're doing is we're introducing a variety of product types and people have a choice. And we're not ruining the neighborhood by adding affordable product and nor do I think we're ruining the neighborhood by offering a larger, more pricey product. I think you are adding real dimension and choice to people's lives.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Colin.
Oh, I did want to talk about the trip generations and the trip report. I'm curious on how sixty five trips were generated per day in the existing condition. And then how does this project relate to the other project? Was that all incorporated into that study? And, you know, what is the timing, I guess, related to those two projects together? And again, the impact of the traffic on those combined together, not just individually.
Okay, so I, I heard three questions and I'm going to try and take them one at a time. The technical question related to the counts, I am going to ask our traffic engineer, Mike Kibbe, to provide us his professional information.
This is Mike Kibbe. I'm with Harris Foker Smith. I'm the traffic engineer for the project. And how we generate traffic for a new development tour or any development for that matter is we use the Institute of Transportation Engineers database for trip generation for projects. As Peter pointed out earlier, our project will generate in, in terms of round trips, around seventy round trips. Or that would be seventy trips out per day and seventy trips back in per day to our site. While the existing land use as, as a general office use generates about sixty or just a hair over sixty, which would be sixty trips in, sixty trips out. So it's, it's almost a net zero change that we're making there. So, and we, and again, we use the Institute Transportation Engineers database to, to generate those, those estimated trips. Does that answer your question?
Is that based on the square footage of just the one unit that's on the west side of the property versus there was like a housing unit? How was that sixty five generated?
That is, that seventy five, it's baked well, the existing land uses are based on the existing square footage of the, of the buildings that are there, which is about eleven thousand two hundred and sixty square feet. So, so the generations based on square footage of, of general office use.
Then I guess on your trap, go ahead, Peter.
Colin, thank you. Mike, you know, I think what I heard you tell us is that it's based on the eleven thousand square foot building that was there. And if we were to put the old office building that was there, which he converted that house to, you know, short term office space. I'm, I'm going to use a hypothetical with you, Mike. Assume that that had offices of six offices in that vacant building. Can you give me a rough idea of how many trips that office, that old home generated prior to its demolition?
Well, that, that is in, that old building is included in this eleven thousand two hundred and sixty square feet. It includes that, the one there, it's along Inca, I believe it is, and that, and that older one.
Okay, so that was helpful. Mike, that was helpful for me and I'm trying to help Colin and myself process some of this information. So sixty five versus the proposed seventy. Mike, if we were not to put residential on it and we put a industrial use of the entire property, what, and this pure speculation, what's the traffic count going to be at that point in time?
Well, if it's like a light industrial, it would really depend on what that is. Typically, light industrial generates very few trips because it's, it's more of a, a factory or warehousing type setting. So there's fewer workers, you know, administrative workers and warehouse workers than it would be concentrated if it was an office or residential type land use. So, or even, or even a commercial type land use like as a small shopping center. Like the Galapago project is that little strip center that's there right now. So, so it's really dependent on what the land use is going to be.
I appreciate that. So without taking that over, I want to get back to Colin and see if we can help answer any further questions.
And that did, I guess, the only follow up then was the, the second question is how does it relate to the other project? And were those taken into account together in the traffic impact study? Were they completely separate? Were they ignored? Just want to make sure that we're assessing the full impact of the sites as they are being proposed.
Yes, when we do the study, we work with the city, Jay Snyder at the city. And we've taken into account the other two sites that we are going to, that, you know, you've heard about the adjacent project and the, and the Galapago project. We also included that Inglewood station that Five Field developers are, are including. We included that future traffic into our base traffic model or trip base traffic volumes. And then, you know, we look at that base number and then we add this project here, the Huron project to that to get a total traffic number. So we, so we can have a comparative basis to look at that within, without this particular project. So yes, they're all included.
Is there a comparison of all of the projects to existing also?
I, I, I think what you're asking, you know, did we take like these three projects and the Five Field project and look at them like if one big project is compared to what the existing situation is? No, we didn't. We did not do that.
I feel like just with the impact of three of them coming in on the same time, same, you know, schedule, generally speaking, at least from what I can see. you know, schedule, generally speaking, at least from what I can see in the timing of these presentations, it would make sense to say, this is before, this is after, you know. Looking at the numbers, sixty-five versus seventy, you're not gonna have much of an impact there, but will it be a bigger impact when you look at the three of them together? I'd be curious to see, and just make sure we're not missing something when you're looking at a cumulative effect and not just individually.
Yeah, well, you know, we worked with the city to, to structure these as they, as staff wanted. So, I guess that's my answer to that.
Okay, Kate Townley, oops. Go ahead, Peter.
Colin, I'd like to respond to that, because the traffic studies were taken independently of each of the product types. And the impact of that within the area was evaluated. So, the question that you're asking is, I believe that I'm trying to understand myself is to say, okay, you're gonna have four new developments in a neighborhood. The Fear Field or Five Field, you're gonna have an Elk Situation, you're gonna have a Galapago, you're gonna have a Huron. Well, this is a neighborhood, and I believe that what I asked the traffic group to do, my, these consultants along with the city, is to take them as a collective neighborhood. So, I'm not technically smart enough to, to explain that to you, like, to shadow. But I appreciate the question and the impact concern.
Kate Townley.
Thanks. I have a few questions. One of them, this may be more for the, oh, whatever. I had a question about visitability, and are all of these units then required, like, an eight-step walk-up for entrance, or are some of them able to be entered, like, right off of the, the street level? So, if one of you could speak to that, like?
Kate, I'd be more than happy to address that. The steps are only on the west side of the addition to the neighborhood, and it was because of the grade with the roads and conditions coming down. You can walk straight into the homes from the east, and there is one or two step on the north.
Yes, and there are twelve visitable units on this site, all six of the east and west buildings where the entrance is on the north. When you do not have a step up from public right-of-way into the unit, as well as the southern units, those are also visitable.
Great, thank you. I was also wondering, did you have, and sorry if I missed this in the presentation, but a public art component, either onsite or somewhere else for this project?
If we do, Joe, our diagrams reflect how many locations, four locations? We have identified on the plot four public art locations in what we consider impact areas.
And then I'll ask the last two questions kind of together. I was just curious, given the, the location of the site and traditionally being an industrial area, was there any consideration of some of the units being like a live-work, a live-work type of product in addition to also having strictly multifamily residential? And then the other question along with that is just with the unknowns on what could happen on the site to your south, I was just kind of wondering how you take that into consideration if there is a large industrial building that's ends up, you know, going into the, the south of the site, and how, how do you're, if you're sort of taking a gamble or investing in this part of the community and changing the zoning in that area, how you deal with that with your potential buyers?
Two very interesting questions. One is, the first one, the actual floor plans of this particular home lives vertically. On the first floor, upon entry into the home, there is a flex space at the entryway, which translates to, it can be used as a home office, it can be used as a studio. It does get serviced by a three-quarter bath and has direct access to the garage. So, one would say it has the capacity for work at home. Would you, you could be a sculptor in that space, you could be a tech in that space. And then the formal bedrooms are up on the third level along with its complements of bathroom capacities and laundry. The second question was, Peter, what happens if? And, you know, we, we are very cognizant of the fact that what happens if something changes with the south? And it turns into a auto mechanic place? What are the probabilities? We think those are like slim to nil. Do I believe that the parcel to the south of us would ever change from an office building to an industrial building? I think the answer is probably not. So, we are good neighbors of the property to the south. It's a longstanding family, they have commitments of two or three buildings in the neighborhood. And I would think that they would maintain the office building. In Kate, in all honesty, the family decided that they were gonna sell that property. The highest and best use would be to add additional residential to it as a part of this catalytic redevelopment of housing in that area. That's just a couple's opinion.
That's helpful. Can I ask one follow-up? Nancy, if that's okay? Just with the, the potential for a home occupation, I believe in the PUD, the only use is residential use, and if there would be a need then to add home occupation as a allowed use within the PUD.
I don't know the technical question of that. I don't believe that if we drove down the street, that there's formal designations that people have to have to use their home office situation.
I can take, I can take that one, Peter. So, we, we, we had, as staff, would treat it the same way as, as any other residential develop, or residential, like, so similar to like an R1C or an R1A, if one of those wanted to do a home occupation. So, there's a certain list of, I think, I think it's, technically it's prohibited ones, which are, you know, usually the pretty obvious ones. But if you wanted to do, yeah, an office space or something like that, and those people went into the, you know, the city to pull a business license to, you know, run a home office, or, you know, photography studio or something like that. I, I, I don't foresee them having any issue based on the, the PUD wording as, as current.
Carl.
I just got a couple of statements here on on your traffic report, page forty-six. It says, "This is the result of background traffic growth at the corridor already at or exceeding its capacity." That's, that's in your, in the traffic report. There's also another one on page forty-six that says for the Hampton, the Inca, Huron, and Galapago intersections, it says, "Poor or failing levels of service during the AM and PM hours." And both of those statements are pretty, pretty direct on the problems existing with the traffic in that area.
I'm gonna ask Mike Kibbe for the technical explanation, and I'm gonna preface it by identifying this same subject that came up with city council. And we addressed the normal expansive growth on an east-west travel route of Hampton. And we all have constraints about improvements in railways along Hampton. What our primary objective was to make sure that we properly manage the north-south transportation lines on Jason, Galapago, on Huron. So, that is my gentle everyday response. Kibbe, can you chime in from your technical explanation?
That statement refers to the Hampton corridor, which in its existing condition today is at or over capacity in both the AM and the PM peak hours. And that's, that statement, you know, is a requirement of our traffic study, that's why it's in there. As we talked about earlier, our site is generating, you know, a total of seventy round trips per day, which, which equates to, you know, on the order of, in the AM peak hour, we're generating thirty-seven total trips, and during the PM peak hour, only seventeen total trips. So, you know, we're not, and only about seventy percent of our traffic is orientated or coming, coming or going from eastbound, or, I'm sorry, yeah, well, eastbound or westbound Hampton. So, you know, really, we are not, our contribution to that traffic is way less than a half a percent of the total traffic on, on those roads. As Peter mentioned, there's not a lot of mitigation that we can provide on Hampton because of right-of-way constraints. It's a, you know, a fully built-out corridor, and that, I believe that the, the city is undertaking some initiatives to address those capacity and congestion concerns. So, that's why those statements are in there, to, to address the, you know, regional background traffic issues.
Colin.
Okay, my last set of questions, I swear. The garage sizes and how the parking was determined, I think I'd asked you last time in the other development, what's your garage width? Are we really getting two cars in there? And then you had shown those images of red squares around the site, was that considered to be on-street parking and needed for this, or what was the intent of those red blocks also?
Okay, so two answers, one, I'm gonna ask our technician here with the ruler, what is the size of the garage, please?
The garage spaces are nineteen by twenty.
Nineteen by twenty.
Twenty deep line.
So, I can put, I can put two Hummy vans in, three motorcycles. Just kidding, Colin, just kidding. But that is a very respectable two-car garage. The second question was?
The red squares.
The red squares. We are not obligated, we have no necessity to count the red squares in our parking count for any reason whatsoever. We did that for the purpose of identification of what the street has in supply today.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Here, Austin.
In the interest of transparency, I wanted to just dig a little deeper into the, on the first page of your presentation, your contribution to the Hampton pedestrian bridge, and is, are you referring to that as, because that was referred to in the last presentation that we heard from you, so, and we've got another one coming, it looks like. So, are, is that contribution to the Hampton pedestrian bridge specific to this project, or is it's gonna be just a general thing from all three projects?
It is specific, each site has a specific allocation defined by the city, so this is specific to this site.
Okay, great, thank you very much. Are there any further, oh, yep, there are from.
Well, and this might be more for clarification from staff. Just on the, the required landscape area, again, the required landscape area is that the thirteen percent, and then the, by adding on the street perimeter area within the right-of-way is outside of the required landscape area, and that's, but is still required, and that's how you got to twenty-one percent?
Yeah, so kind of, I'll answer two questions here, one's this one, and one's from the previous question. So, for the landscaping, for, for this project, and not only, and for any other development in the city, we consider, we consider the required landscaping percentage as a percentage of the, of your area of your site. But you can include landscaping that you provide in the, the right-of-way, so the portion between the curb and your actual property line as part of your, your landscaping, if that makes sense. So, those portions between the sidewalk and back of curb would be counted as part of their percentage of landscaping, if that makes sense. Or I could try to rephrase it.
No, I think that makes sense. So,
Okay.
with the addition of the trees, they're still at, they're over twenty percent landscaping required for the site.
Correct, yep. And then to kind of go back to the Hampton pedestrian bridge, you know, certainly for the, the, so we, we have those, those five conditions that staff had recommended. And for the, for the Jason one, you know, we did recommend that sixty, I think sixty-six thousand dollar Hampton pedestrian bridge contribution. We didn't have a similar recommendation on these ones due to distance from that bridge. Certainly, if that's something that the, you know, applicant and, and you guys are open to, could always be added as an additional condition to recommend to planning and zoning commission. But that is not one that we had in, in our staff recommendations, but it's certainly something that could, you know, be added if, if all other parties are interested in that.
Well, thank, thank you for that clarification, because I saw the words about that contribution to the pedestrian bridge, but I didn't see later on, but it was a, it was a hefty, you know, four hundred, four hundred-page packet, so I was just wanna make sure that I hadn't missed anything, so, okay. Is, are there any further comments or questions from the commissioners?
Yes, Carl.
The, I, I, I'm for the requirement for a fee for the bridge. That's, people are gonna use the bridge that are, that's over there. The bridge is probably, I don't, I don't know what it's gonna cost, but it's gonna be well over ten million dollars, so. I mean, sixty-six thousand dollars is not gonna hardly put a dent in it, so. I, I'm in favor of that. One, one other thing I wanna clarify on the, the, the taxes that the are being paid to the, by the developer. Like, this one is seventy-eight thousand dollars for the taxes, property taxes. Inglewood itself only gets fifteen percent of that, so Inglewood's, out of that seventy-eight thousand, they're getting eleven thousand seven hundred dollars, which is not a whole lot. The county gets a bunch, and the, and the schools get a lot out of that seventy-eight thousand. The city does get very little. It's, it's not a seventy-eight thousand dollar check going to the city. I just wanted to clarify that.
Any other questions or hands up, Nancy?
No, not at this time.
Okay, so if I'm not mistaken, this is the time that we can ask the, the public if they have some, something that they would like to share regarding this, is that correct, Nancy?
Yes, so if anyone is online that wants to speak in favor or opposition of this project, please raise your hand, and I will call on you and swear you in. I'm seeing about three different people from the public.
Great, thank you.
Do any of you wish to speak? I do not see any hands or anyone coming off my chair, so.
Okay.
I think we're good.
Okay, great. Is there any further discussion amongst the commissioners? None. I believe I need to ask for a motion to close the public hearing.
That's correct.
Well, here's such a motion.
I'll move to close the public hearing.
Thank you, Kate.
I'll second.
Thank you, second Kate, you're Kate two, Kate one, Kate two, whatever. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, Nancy, would you call for the vote on the motion, please?
Yes, Kate Townley?
Yes.
McDonaldson?
Yes.
Colin Hagerty?
Yes.
Kate Fuller?
Yes.
Noel Atkins?
Yes.
Carl Adams?
Yes.
Brenda Hubka?
Yes.
And Chair Austin?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. If I'm not mistaken, we are supposed to move on to, which first, the staff report?
No, you'll do, we need a motion.
Oh.
To, to recommend to city council and then the.
Yeah, okay, the findings, okay, thank you.
Right. Yeah, and then once you all discuss and state your findings, then we'll vote. We'll do them, yeah, okay.
We need a motion to.
Yes.
State our, our recommendation to city council. I think Colin's trying to talk, but it's not working.
I usually mess it up, I was waiting to see if somebody else wanted to kind of mess it up instead of me.
All the time, don't worry about it.
But I'll go ahead and recommend presentation to council of, let's see, that is Zone 2021004 with the conditions that staff has recommended, plus the additional recommendation of contribution to the bridge fund as requested by two of the council.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
I will second it.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion?
I have a point I'd like to bring up, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Sorry, I didn't raise my hand. I guess one of the considerations, because we're discussing the motion on, at hand, one of the things I'd like to consider adding to the list of recommendations that are already in there from community development is a consideration around the landscaping requirements. I believe there is an opportunity to do a fee in lieu if you've missed, if you're not meeting landscaping requirements. This can be, you know, different with a PUD because of course you can come up with your own requirements. In this particular case, they're exceeding what would normally be in an industrial use, but they're turning it into a residential use. So I think we have the ability to look at what the residential standards would be. And they're at twenty-one percent, a residential standard for multi-unit, for more than four units would be twenty-five percent. I realize it's only a four percent difference. But I would recommend that we consider for that four percent doing a fee in lieu for that difference in landscaping requirement.
Is that a friendly amendment, Ms. Townley?
Yes.
Okay, can you be more specific so I could add it and then?
For, I would recommend that in order to meet what would typically be a landscaping requirement for residential use, multi, or multi-unit residential use is twenty-five percent. So I'd recommend we, for that difference of four percent where they're at twenty-one percent now, that we recommend of the, the city's rate for a fee in lieu for the landscaping requirement. That's probably not any less confusing.
No, but could I repeat it back just so I make sure I'm clear? I says to meet residential landscaping of twenty-five percent, the difference of above the twenty-one percent, the additional four percent be paid in fee in lieu to the city?
Uh, yes.
Okay, thanks. And Colin?
There was Colin's, Colin's motion, right?
Yeah, I got another question though, if you don't mind, Chair.
No.
Colin, for your condition, contribution to the bridge fund, any bridge fund or was there a specific bridge fund and was there an amount?
A specific bridge fund for the Hampton, what is it, the?
Residential.
Hampton Avenue Rail Trail Ped Bridge.
Yeah, okay, that too.
Rail Trail Bridge, okay, thank you.
And in the amount, you know, they had sixty-six on the, on the last one. There are less units but higher price. You know, maybe it's forty for this.
Okay, yes, so Mr. Hagerty made the motion, Mr. Atkins seconded. So are you two open to Kate's friendly amendment to add the landscaping requirement?
Yes.
Okay.
I am also, I, my only question is, would that be, is that the same as the park and open space fee in lieu? Or is that a separate?
Separate fee in lieu for landscaping.
Then I'm on board.
Thank you all for that clarification, Chair.
Nancy, for the clarification of myself and perhaps some other people online, could you read back what we're voting on, please?
Sure, currently, it's a motion to recommend case ZON 2021-0043601 South Huron to city council for approval with the following conditions, and there are seven conditions. Now, we have the payment of the park fee in lieu, reconstruct the curb ramps, add crosswalk striping, installation and maintenance of historic plaque at the corner of Ithaca and Huron Streets. All proposed public multimodal improvements will be reviewed by Public Works Department. A minor subdivision is required and needs to be filed at Rappahoe County prior to building permit. Contribution in the amount of forty thousand dollars to the Hampton Avenue Rail Trail Pedestrian Bridge and increasing residential landscaping to twenty-five percent with the difference of the four percent being paid in a fee in lieu to the city.
Okay, commissioners, does that comport with your understanding of the motion? See, nobody raising their hands. There's a motion.
Wait, we've got Carl.
Oh, I'm sorry, hi Carl.
All right. The four percent going to the parks, isn't there a fee on the, for the parks as it is?
That there, if I can respond to that, there is a separate park fee in lieu. There's also an opportunity for a landscape fee in you, fee in lieu if you're not able to meet the requirements. So it's in the code with the table sixteen six seven dot four for the minimum landscape requirements. We have an option for a fee in lieu. So it is separate from the park.
Clarify, I've added that to the condition that it's a landscape fee in lieu.
Thank you, Nancy. Does that answer your question, Carl?
But it goes to the parks, right, correct?
I honestly don't know. The city collects it. So, and they determine what that fee is.
Okay, so it could go to a general fund or whatever. Okay.
Any further discussion? All right, Nancy, could you call for the vote, please?
Sorry, can I interrupt? So, just to be clear for procedural things, in this discussion right now, we should be providing our findings?
I'm going to ask Victoria McDermott, our Assistant City Attorney. That was my understanding, Vicky, is that still the case? Or can they state their findings when they vote? How would you like it?
Yes, that's still the case, that it's to do the findings now and then, then do the vote.
Okay. So I am calling for.
I'm going to call on Kate.
Thank you.
You bet.
Well, I was just, just going to say then that, I mean, I think that this particular application, it meets the requirements for a PUD that we have, you know, with, within the code. I think that it is definitely something that help us, helps us meet the needs in our comprehensive plan around housing and especially more availability of affordable housing and for housing that is for purchase. So I think that it has a lot of good qualities to it that will help improve the city.
Colin?
I also agree that it's consistent with the neighborhood plan, the comprehensive plan, the downtown plan, that we are looking for more variety in residential units and density in there. And I'd like the, the proposal that has been presented with these additional items being requested. So I appreciate that, that information.
Okay.
Because I have to have an opportunity to say it at some time. Fee in lieu is not something that we have control over in terms of how those are set. It seems as though this particular site has a fee in, or the fee in lieu that they are collecting for parks is, looks like if I am calculating correctly, is even above what we typically collect. That said, I think it's point zero zero one of the value of the property, once they're able to sell those units. So I really think that's something we should consider as a city. We're value, valuing parks in those spaces as much. Are we charging enough for a fee in lieu to really be able to sustain our parks moving forward? So just a statement.
Does anyone else want to make findings? I don't see anyone, Chair.
Okay.
Oh, Brenda, excuse me, Brenda, you came off mute, were you going to say something? I apologize.
No, I've been thinking about it, but I'm, I'm good, thanks.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. So do we go back to Colin's original motion at this point in time with the amendments?
If that, if everyone's in consensus, we can either do it as amended or we can do an amendment, and if that fails, we can go back to the original one. What is your pleasure?
I would like to try and do a vote with the amended considerations.
Okay.
Do, yeah, go, do any of the commissioners wish to hear what we're voting on again? Okay, Nancy, could you please call for the vote?
Sure, Kate Townley?
Yes.
McDonaldson?
Yes.
Colin Hagerty?
Yes.
Sorry, Kate Fuller?
Yes.
Noel Atkins?
Yes.
Carl Adams?
Yes.
Chair Austin?
Yes.
And Brenda Hubka, sorry, I got you out of order.
Sorry, yes.
Motion passes.
Okay. Great.
Thank you all.
Yes, thank you all very much.
I, on behalf of my team, I want to thank neighbors who have worked closely with us. I want to make another representation complaining commission that we are neighborhood developers and we're there and we appreciate your insights. We're going to try to do our very best, thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Cudle, that's helpful, thank you very much. According to my notes, I believe the next item on the agenda is the staff report.
So I'll start.
Staff choice, I think you mean, Chair.
So this is Wade and I'll start the staff's choice. To inform you all that don't know already, this is my last meeting with you all. This is my last week in Inglewood and I am moving to Michigan to be closer to family for family reasons. And so I just wanted to tell you all that it really has truly been a privilege to work with you all. I think you're an outstanding planning and zoning commission and not just blowing smoke there. You guys are all very prepared and always ask great questions and are just, have been a pleasure to work with and I've really enjoyed working with you all. So you all have a lot on your plate and I know you're in good hands. The first round of interviews for my replacement is starting on Monday. So it won't be a long delay, I'm positive you'll find a good replacement for me. But I just wanted to say to you all, good luck, best of wishes. And again, I really enjoyed working with you, so thank you.
Well, Wade, I'm sure that I, all of the commissioners would agree that we're very sad to hear that you're leaving us. You have been informational, always have the answers, been there, with, working so hard with all of us and all of city staff through so many issues. And I'm really very sorry personally to see you go.
I appreciate it, thank you, Michelle.
Carl had his hand up real quick.
Yeah, I'm also sorry to see you go and want to thank you for all the work that you've done and all the contacts I've had with you have been really encouraging for me to, to go through and continue with working for the city. One suggestion is, can you move your family out here?
There's a lot of them, I'm afraid. But thank you, yeah, I appreciate it.
Well, we'll definitely miss you and don't make a stranger, check in with us from time to time.
I will probably pop into a few of your code next meetings just to see how things are going. I might be under an alias, you never know, but I might be there.
That sounds like a fun idea. That'd be awesome. Okay, I'm on attorney's choice. And too bad, Wade, that we're meeting virtually because we would have brought, we would have had a cake for you, so, sorry about that.
Well, that's okay, it's a thought that counts.
Yes, no, I wish we were also meeting in person so we can have more celebration for Wade. And that's, I did not know that and I'm, we're really going to miss you. But the city attorney's office doesn't have anything at this time, but thank you.
Thank you.
Chair, if I could just make one?
Absolutely.
City council last evening appointed a new alternate to the planning and zoning commission.
Oh, nice.
And that is Aaron Martinez. And so we will get him up to speed by the next meeting. And then our own Brenda Hubka has moved from an alternate to a regular, regular member, regular commissioner. So that's all I want to let the commissioner know.
Well, thank you very much for letting us know that. And just sort of, sort of a little bit along those lines, we will not be doing elections of Chair and Vice Chair this evening. That will be at our meeting on the seventh of February, is that right, Nancy?
No, February eighth.
Eight, I'm sorry, okay.
That's okay.
So I just want to clarify that for anybody. Anyway, it's now time, I believe, for commissioners' choice. Carl, you're the first one I see on my screen.
No, no comments really, nothing for now, for now, thank you.
Okay. Brenda?
I'm good, thanks.
All right, Colin?
I just wanted to take the moment to thank Wade also, I know Carl did and I know everyone does, but the, just the amount of support that you've given, the answers you've given, the positive nature that you've had all the time has been, it's been awesome. And I know that we will replace you, but we can never actually replace you. So thank you for everything and good luck and, you know, keep us posted and send us an email or something.
You're quite welcome, it's been my pleasure, you're quite welcome.
Thank you, that's it.
Meg?
Nothing for me, Brenda, thanks.
Right, Noel?
Wade, I appreciate all the seemingly random questions you've been able to answer for me over the last years. Someday I'll write an email explaining how they all tie together, but thank you.
You're welcome.
Kate Fuller?
Wade, thanks for mentoring me and everyone and we're really going to miss you. That was honestly a shock when you announced that, I'm still kind of digesting it. So you're going to be very missed. Good luck in Michigan and I hope everything is okay with your family.
Yeah, thank you, thank you very much.
Kate Townley?
Wade, you've been an absolute pleasure to work with and I wish you all the best in Michigan. Hopefully the Lions start winning again and. Thank you for everything.
You're welcome.
Anybody I missed? Okay, well Wade, there you have it, it's unanimous. We all have loved working with you and wish you the best in your, in the future with your family. Understand that you have to leave us for family reasons and that's a tough thing for us to accept, but you know, it's, it's a priority and we all understand that you need to go take care of that stuff, so anyways.
And Inglewood has a lot of good things coming its way and I'm sorry that I'll miss out on that, but you're in good hands.
Well, thank you, we, we believe we are too, but we'll still have, we'll still miss you in spite of that.
Thank you.
Is there anything else, any other business before the commissioner, commission? All right, seeing none, I will move to adjourn this meeting and stay warm, everyone. It's pretty chilly out there, so. Thank you all very much.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.